The St. Cloud Transit Commission Board is now in session. Let the record show that everyone is here except for the mayor of St. Cloud. Are there any additions or changes to the agenda?
Yes, I'd like to remove item number 11.
Okay. Somebody want to move the agenda as amended?
Some would.
Second.
Further discussion, on favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. Consent agenda. Item five, April 16th, 2019, meeting minutes. Item six, April 2019, balance sheet, budget statement and bank reconciliation. Item seven, April 2019, list of bills. And item eight, April 2019, fixed route, dialer ride and North Star Link ridership reports. Motion approved.
Second.
Further discussion, on favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. Open forum, Kim?
Yep, so this is for the cities and the planning commissions. And I'd like you to take it back if you could. A lot of times, in the initial planning stages, people aren't always considering the dialer ride buses, especially the champions. I'll give you a couple examples. It's not specific to a city, but just examples. The new Verizon store and division that even has trouble with regular Harbach. The driver can't get in in one pass. They actually have to get in and back up again onto 23. And the Panera Mall, I'm not sure what all stores are there, but that's very difficult for the buses of any size. So when you're planning commissions and when it comes to you guys for approval, is there any pre-planning that you do with the bus company in advance to make sure that the dialer ride buses can actually get in and out of the parking area and approach the main entrance of whatever business it is, business or apartment building? Because it's a lot easier to fix it when it's in the pen and ink stage. It makes it hard on the bus company, it makes it hard on the passengers, and sometimes just a little tweak can make a big difference.
Okay. Yeah, good idea.
Starts at the engineering stage.
Yep. All right. All right, Mr. Schultz.
Can I just sit here, Tom?
You can do anything you want.
Well, with limitations.
You can go outside and shut the door.
We know you well enough.
Is this a three minutes or do I have like 10, 12?
You got whatever you want.
Halfway into it.
Several years ago.
Your time's running out.
So, to those of you who don't know me, I'm Rick Schultz from St. Joseph. Several years ago, Tom from Metro Bus came up to St. Joe. We sat down with Monastery and CSP and tried to use some long-range planning and build some expertise to lay out routes. We're currently expanding Industrial Park East. We have an Industrial Park West plan. We've had some good growth since then, but problem is to sit at this table and actually get routes is terribly expensive for the city of St. Joseph. Ryan, I mean, I don't know what the numbers are to be on joint and also what it would cost to have dedicated routes, but as you may or may not be aware, this session was after our city council meeting on Monday, and he said, you know, if you're not aware, 30% of our parcels are tax exempt. 70% are paying the rest of the service. And to get dedicated routes, even with CSP involved, similar to what St. Cloud State might be for the city of St. Cloud, is still quite absorbent. We're waiting to hear back what the Sartell pilot program did and find out if that's a program that we can enter into, but what we're looking for is the model right for St. Joe and can it be tweaked so that new routes or some kind of routing system to St. Joe can develop. We're not looking for routes yet. We're looking at how to budget for it and what it might cost. How do we get, you know, how do we get to that point where we can either share routes or dedicate routes or be part of another pilot program like Sartell had, if that worked? And just open that discussion on how can we evolve it so cities like St. Joe that don't have that property tax capital can join. Right now, it's taxed hindered. You know, we just, we'd have to increase taxes for a limited amount of students, seniors, monastery. The ridership would be low, I admit it. So we're not talking about five days a week or whatever. We don't really know what that model is. We just need to start that discussion so we can have some budget discussions, some term budget discussions as we move this year and next year. That's the ask. The ask is how does that model work? How do we get more involved and what's the right fit for St. Joe? And that's where I'm at. I understand everybody.
Yeah, all right. Yep. Yeah, I think we can look into that.
I mean, I'm not sure what Tom left back, way back in. He was doing 25-year planning at that point. I don't know where that ended up, but I didn't have a plan. I didn't bring it with. So there's some documentation out there somewhere.
Okay. Yeah, we should be able to judge enough.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
See, what's her number? Yeah, 50%?
Yeah. Start with 20.
Start with 20?
Yeah. Just make sure that they're bought in.
Yeah, there you go.
I gotta leave now so you don't hear that.
All right. That's all I had on the open forum sheet, so. Item number nine, consideration of fiscal year 2018 audited financial statements.
Good afternoon, commissioners. If you recall, we had the auditors here in December to go over the preliminary audited financial statements. The par numbers did come in. That was really the only change is the pension accruals for the, the, for the government-wide statements, sorry. That pension number came in. It was adjusted a little bit. We had just prior years' numbers in there before that, but that's the only change to the financial statements, so we just need approval for the final financial.
Okay. Do you need, anybody got, commissioners got any comments, questions? Do you need approval to approve that or that's?
Yeah, I think I.
Financial report, motion approved.
Second.
Further discussion, on favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. All right, thank you. Item 10, 2019 workers' comp renewal.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
This is just an informational piece. Our work comp renewal was effective on May 15th of this year. We did stay with State Fund Virtual Insurance, who is our current vendor. We saw a renewal increase of about $11,000 for the 2019 to 2020.
Was there a reason for that? Was there more injuries or was there more employees now or?
We actually had an increase in our experience modification from .72 to .76, so that impacts it. We also, although we had a decrease in our total payroll, we had an increase in the majority of our, of the driver or operator category, which is the majority of our employees and are covered by the insurance. And then, so that decrease in total payroll covered some of that increase in experience mod. We also did receive a credit for MSFM, which decreased our schedule mod, but it did offset the total increase enough.
Okay. Do you need a motion for that?
No, just informational.
Just informational, that's what we like. Anybody got any questions? Item number 11 has been eliminated. Item 12, discussion on adding new communities to our service area.
Commissioners, Metro Bus has been approached in the past with various community leaders just on the potential of adding new service to the service area. So just like to have a quick discussion just on your level, you know, just to get some direction, however, on how we should proceed behind the scenes to give you the information you need, should we look to extend to add, should we look to add communities to our service area, put it that way?
Do we, how's the Sartell one doing and how are they, are they still levying the same as they were levied before? And how is it doing and do we need more time for that study to give us a pattern or something?
So I think you're kind of talking about two separate themes. So the levy is consistent across the board. It's 3.56%.
Which will be up for debate next council or next meeting.
I bet you're parting.
So that, so if St. Joe came in, they'd automatically get that?
So we're kind of going, yes.
Under current model.
Yeah.
Under the current model. So the question would be, I guess, I'm just going to kind of curtail off of what Ryan is saying, is that first of all, are you as commissioners open to serving other communities, number one? And number two, then if you are open to serving other communities, do you want them then to be, sit at the table with you? Do you want them to be equal partners such as you are? Or do you want us to charge it as a contract model per se, so that we would determine what our full cost is and then they would purchase the route, similar to kind of what we do with the revenue service contracts with SESU, for example? Where they purchase a specific route to that area, but they don't have a voice at the table? So there's kind of two avenues that we can go down and I guess we're kind of looking for direction as far as what you guys are comfortable with.
So if they purchased a route, it would be up to the city of, that's just you St. Joe because you're here. It'd be up to them to levy a tax to pay for that because it would come out of their general fund?
Correct. We would just have a contract. We would be a contract service with them and we would then, you know, determine what's going to work on our end as far as the operators and as far as bids and that kind of stuff, how do that work? And we would say, yep, we could do this model, whether it be connects or whatever, but keeping in mind that whatever service we determine, then paratransit also has to follow that, right? So that cost isn't just a fixed route out to a certain service area. If we're going to provide service, then it's the full scoop, right? So you get the dialer ride, the paratransit and also the fixed route. We're required to do it with both types of service. So we can't just say, yep, we're just going to shoot a connects out there and then make that work. It has to have both services.
If you're, if we enter into agreement with the city of St. Joe's example, I understand that.
Yeah.
But if we were to contract directly with St. Joe-St. Ben's, today I understand they have their own student busing. If we were to connect with, contract with them directly, do those same stipulations apply, being your, not a municipality?
Yep, to answer your question, but it's going to depend on what type of service they're looking for. Are they looking for just a straight, because we've had some of those discussions? Is it going to be a commuter bus?
Right.
Because like right now, we're commuter service with the North Star Link and we don't have to provide paratransit in that same area, but then that's, that's not a route, right? That's not a, we can stop here, here and here. That's a direct, we'll stop here and back and here and back. So it's a different type of service.
Yeah, I just look at it from, we just have an open conversation.
Thank you.
I look at it from a, a starting point in that for us to take on a new city, significant risk from our organization as well as from that, maybe less than that city because they know the cost going into it, right? If we were to be able to replicate the service that St. John-St. Ben's offers today for their students inter-campus as well as into St. Cloud to connect with the rest of our network, for me seems like a great starting point. From there, we can build upon additional routes, but from, also seeing from the connects and Sartell, I think for a community that becomes the model, I don't see specific St. Joe setting up bus stops around their community to have a bus, have five people on it an hour, tops. That's just my thought is how do you create that hybrid? I don't know that we would want to take a model that's, you know, is starting to see some changes here, but really has been stagnant to apply to a new city.
Yeah, it may be something that St. Joe, maybe you wouldn't do them every hour, maybe you'd do them at, I don't know, you'd have to know when your, when your most passengers would be there. In other words, are they there at 7:00 in the morning? Do they want to come into, into crossroads to meet there to get a different bus? And then back out at 5:00? Do they want an 8:00, a 9:00 and bus at noon and then a 5:00 and a whatever? You know, what are those connections, I think?
We did have St. Joe as part of our long-range plan, maybe updated our long-range plan a few years back. We did have St. Joe incorporated into phase two, I believe, of the long-range plan, where we had a direct shot from Crossroads Mall out to College of St. Benedict with, I believe, one or two stops along 23. They did one stop at the movie theater and one stop before you get into St. Joe. So it is part of our long-range plan and it did have a cost associated with it, but that was once again three years prior. So that cost, in our case, might traditionally go up maybe 2% or 3% with inflation, but we did have a dollar amount associated with that cost of providing service to St. Joe, hubbing out of the Crossroads Mall directly into St. Benedict.
It seems because of a smaller community, and how about St. Augusta, are they going to be the next ones that would ask for something?
Right, which is kind of where we're trying to go.
That a contract would be the way to go instead of, you know, but you'd have to figure that cost out, so. And if we have, if we started it.
Yeah, we have it.
You know, we can just add to it or, you know.
The more we're hearing is kind of, you wouldn't want them necessarily to kind of be on the commission. It's more a matter of contract service to each of those areas.
I mean, personally, I don't care if they sit on this board or not, but I think that board's going to be very expensive for them. I think if Rick Schultz wants to sit on his board, it's going to cost him a levy for all his tax, is all of the citizens.
We've done it, we've done it now, yeah.
Yeah.
It's exorbitant.
Yeah.
Gets you a chair though.
That gets to be pretty, yeah.
I got you right now.
In fact, here you can have this one.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So CSP's approach already, we're aware of that, and you wouldn't put them on one program and the city on another. Wouldn't it make sense to combine them into some kind of unified?
We would have that conversation.
I mean, we'd have that conversation when Tom was out there and Monastery was there, CSP was there, city was there, the seniors and everything were there.
Yeah, I met with St. Joe approximately two months ago, actually. I met with the CFO at St. Joe, I met with the executive team.
With CSP?
CSP, I'm sorry, as far as bus service. So we provided them just rough numbers, we provided them just rough estimates, but we haven't heard back from St. Joe. But they seem to be more likely to keep what they have. Right now, they have a bus that goes into the crossroads on weekends, so they already have the infrastructure in place. So, you know, from the conversation I had with them, it looks like they might just want to engage that service that they have and maybe expand it instead of just going to the mall one day a week, possibly maybe, you know, maybe two or three days a week. But I haven't heard anything officially back, but this is just from the initial talks that we had with, with the executive team approximately two months ago.
I'm not trying to join this conversation, but when Tom was out, they talked about eliminating that service and joining with the city and combining their bus services to cross whatever. And taking that cost into what the bus service would be for Metro?
Yeah, I didn't get that.
Yeah. So what I'm saying is I don't want to be independent that they're coming, if you're bringing a bus out there for CSP, then certainly we should try and partner with them. We're not really getting along right now, but we still want to partner with them on this.
It only makes sense that if they were, if we were going to pick up, if Metro Bus was going to pick up CSP and St. John's units, that then anybody in St. Joe should be able to go over to this terminal and get on it for the same price and you guys share the cost. Now, if St. John's and St. Ben's are bringing their own bus in, that's got nothing to do with us and they can drop those people off wherever they want and they get on one of our buses.
Right. Keep in mind too, if we were to utilize Metro Bus's infrastructure, Metro Bus's role as stock, and we provide the service at St. Benedict, then it has to be open to the public, which means that anybody in that area could utilize our services to and from St. Benedict.
Sure, I mean, I could get on Way Park and ride out, drive through St. Joe Meat Market and get my meat and then get on a bus and ride back, you know.
So we should let them pay for it?
Comes with the chair.
To me, if you're asking what opinions from us, I think it's going to be a hybrid. Whatever you do, it's going to have to, probably negotiate with St. John, St. Ben's and St. Joe and however that works out, it's probably going to be the way it is because the negotiation with St. Ben's has always been difficult. I think you're going to have to sort of direct us to what to go with. I don't oppose anything, it's just a matter, see if we can get it to work out.
It's true. I'm a numbers person. I want to see the numbers. I think it's really premature to talk about any of these options. Personally, I want to see the numbers because what I don't want to happen, sorry, Rick, I don't want our levy in South Rapids, I can only speak for us, to go from three, whatever, 3.2, 3. whatever it is up to 6. I don't want to do that either, any more than Rick wants the full levy.
No, I agree. I don't think you should change our levies.
No.
So that's why the contract might be a better.
Yeah. Current communities aren't going to take on more just to add St. Joe or any community.
Or St. Augusta or, it's supposed to be the only two right now, but yeah.
Question is, is it going to be financially reasonable for it to work out? That was, that's the numbers that you'll have to figure out.
Right.
I got to think there's other models out there from communities that have gone through this growth and we can maybe look at those models and come back with an option.
Great.
So just the last thing is exactly what you said, we're just looking for numbers. What models do you have that might or might not fit and what do they cost and how we might combine with what's out there? So we start budgeting for it and see if it does or doesn't fit. That's really.
Sure.
Well, we have the three modules, as Paul mentioned, we have one with St. Cloud State currently where we have specific services where the students that park in K-Lab, for example, they get on the shuttle bus and they take it to Miller Center. And then in addition to that, the students are able to ride our core services with Spike of the Pass, known as our free ride program, and university pays for the free ride program. That's one service module. The second module would be like similar to what we have in Sartell. If that's successful, then that would be like another model. And then the third one would be just traditional fixed route services, which was part of our long-range plan, which is part of phase two of our long-range plan, where we just provide fixed route service from point to point, from St. Cloud into St. Joe. Those are the three models that we have currently right now, with one of them being the trial, the one in Sartell, which is the connect service.
Well, what I hear is up there from this board is nobody's opposed to it, so I agree. I think we need, we need numbers, St. Joe needs numbers.
I think the team was just looking for some guidance, whether you were okay with no pay, you're getting the same levy that we are, or are you open to exploring contracted services?
I think that right now we'd be open to anything. I don't, unless somebody's got a different opinion to that.
If you were to have a contract, from what I'm hearing, it would be a contract within the city of St. Joe and this college of St. Benedict, so both you guys would join together and provide, and provide services to.
We'll initiate that conversation. If the city decides that we're going to do a contract, then we absolutely will bring CSP into the discussion.
Okay.
We had that, we had that conversation several years ago, but we haven't had it since.
Okay, so we are getting numbers just based on three service modules. One already being, one is already in the long-range plan, so we can just pull those numbers. You might have to update it maybe just with today's costs and then the model based on the one in Sartell and then just our traditional fixed route module that we have currently within our coordinate network. Okay, so those three.
And I don't know that it's our job to coordinate that with St. Ben's. I think we tell St. Joe it's going to cost $100 a month for this and they say, okay, we're going, now we're going to go to St. Ben's and say, give us 50 bucks and so it's costing them 50.
But in addition to those three options, I would say there's an option whether they're a board member or whether that's contract service. If they're a board member, they're taking on the risk of the entire organization along with us.
Right.
If they're contract service or not, that should be a differing price for them.
Okay.
So that's what I heard from the board is that we're open to.
If they're going to get a seat on this board, they're going to pay a full fair share. And that's not what I hear of St. Joe wants to do, that they can't afford that because...
Well, theoretically, it would be cheaper for them to sit on the board, right? Because you guys would then incorporate, because it's going to be very expensive to run up to St. Joe. There's going to be a lot of debt at time. I mean, that's just a given, so.
But they've got limited risk in it.
Right, yeah. So to be honest, I mean, it's cheaper for St. Joe to sit on the board, it's more expensive for you guys, but it makes more sense to do the counter, no offense.
We'll work those numbers to make sure that.
Whatever it is, add 20.
Do you remember that course you took, Creative Finance?
That's the one. You and I'll just work on that.
Price is going up every time you guys open.
Yeah, anything else?
What else do you want?
Bring a couple used buses.
Places go.
Anything else on that topic?
So we'll work on the numbers and then next month we'll provide an update of.
Whatever, I mean, next month, month after, I mean, I don't think they're in a big, big hurry, but I think.
No, yeah, this is just starting the discussion budget cycle, so there's not a really like urgent.
But it won't be three years.
I don't want to wait three years, but I think, I don't need it next month.
Okay, got it.
All right. Anything else on that?
No.
All right, CEO update.
So commissioners, I'd like to spend some time, spend a little time talking to you about the connect service, actually. Just the executive team, we met approximately two weeks ago to review the current ridership data for Sartell connect service. We looked at the trends that we're seeing on connects, comparison data of the Sartell ridership over the last several years, where, and we also looked at where, to see where people are getting on and off as compared to the old Route 32, which was a traditional fixed route at the circular, circular route within Sartell, and how often people are riding. So we determined that it was too hard to make a permanent decision based on only a few months of data, so we are looking to, or actually, we are going to extend the pilot program additional six months. So we'll go from July 1st to December 31st. We're excited about some of the trends we are seeing. While not seeing the ridership results we were originally hoping for, we feel by extending it another six months, summer times are totally different from the winter months in Sartell. You know, there's no school per se, but there's a lot of activities where students might want to go, or kids or anybody might want to go from point A to point B, the Sartell Community Center, Beret's Arena, et cetera. So we just want to, you know, just give this connects time, six more months will be enough time just to see a full year's worth of ridership information, a full year's worth of data, then make a true rather informed decision by having numbers in front of us. We just didn't want to just pull the plug so soon without giving it the full chance to see EA or NA. So we just want to extend it to actually six months. We just want to just let you know that we're just excited for the potential that connects could bring to the community, but we want to give it to December 31st.
As chair. I think that's a great idea. We live in Minnesota and you can't judge that by six months. I agree. You got, you got to look at a full year. I don't have any issue with that.
Are we seeing a drop in ridership from historic ridership of the fixed route?
So.
Okay.
So overall ridership, we compared it between Route 32 and 31, right? And for multiple years, and we have a significant less, significantly less ridership with the connects, but we're seeing a very positive trend. It's increased ridership, the first month increased 35% and then like 9.5% each month afterwards. So if that trend continues, that's very promising, but overall the ridership as compared to the fixed route is significantly less.
Because it's amazing, I haven't heard Metro Bus in most of my life in Sartell and all I hear about is connects.
Really? That's good.
So there's, there's a lot of conversation out there about it. Extreme amount of conversation in the Sartell Senior Connection Group and their utilization of it with the community center and elsewhere, but, and then I'd also understand or would like to understand the cost of fixed route versus the new connects. So I understand our cost obviously has decreased, so where's that equilibrium? What do we need from a ridership perspective to make that switch? I'd be confident in saying that the growth of connects would certainly outweigh the growth of a fixed route within our community.
We're hoping to see that, but again, we don't know. The other thing is I want to caution to say that the cost is much less because it's not. Because you still have, the operator isn't going in a circle, right? But you still have the cost of the bus, maintenance rotating, and you still have the cost of the operator. And in all reality, for some of the time during the day now, we have two operators on, so essentially some of that cost has increased. I have a doubtful analysis to determine exactly where the break, break-even point is, but again, they're still driving around, the buses are running the same amount of time periods because we're still operating during that same window.
To an extent, right? I mean, they're parked in a parking lot versus continual riding, but yeah. Okay. Yeah, I'd be supportive of keeping the pilot going, but.
Yeah, it seems like that makes sense. It's not a long enough time to get any kind of results.
Especially the winter, we had, which nobody expected, and we saw temperatures minus 40, minus 50. 40, minus 50, and just, I guess the snow comes every year, but just the cold temperatures, I think this year, you know, we really experienced it, you know, below, not average-like temperatures in the wintertime.
But again, that's when I would think that people would rather get picked up at their curbside than stand at a bus stop.
Yeah, you'd think so.
It just doesn't-
And again, so, we're also going to ramp up the advertising, we're going to try some new things with that, we're going to try to market, yeah, so we're kind of going to try and hit it from a bunch of different areas, and hopefully we'll see the results that we're looking for. If the model works, I mean, I think we've all been talking about, we could do it here, what's right here, what about this area, you know, I think that we've all got high hopes for it, but we have to see it happen.
Yep.
Second thing, actually. So, take me out of here.
Grabs me.
Yeah, alright. So on Sunday, one of our operators, Todd Deserik, he's a dialeride, dialeride operator, he competed nationally in the 2019 CTA bus operators rodeo. He competed against 76 other operators from all throughout the nation, including Hawaii and Canada, and he placed first. So, Todd would love to be here to take a picture of you guys, but unfortunately, he's still celebrating out in California, so, I'm going to get a trophy from him, so, here's the trophy.
He's got the trophy from it.
So just want to just recognize Todd for, this is the second time that he plays first in the last three years.
Can he come to another meeting? Can he come to a future meeting?
Yes, yes, I would definitely have him come to a future meeting, maybe-
And now that we don't have a mirror, it's a lot easier.
Right, so just want to just congratulate Todd again in front of the commission, but you know, that we have the safest operator in North America, right here in our midst. Metrobus, we're proud to have that, we're proud of all our operators who come, signed up for the rodeo, but Todd was able to complete nationally, and he has bragging rights for the next 12 months.
They have to build a trophy case somewhere?
Yeah, it's bad cave because of that. Or man cave, man cave. So speaking of rodeos, Metrobus is going to host our local rodeo on Friday, June 21st, at K-Lot on the SESU campus. If you're interested, I'll send you an email after the board meeting, if you're interested, you guys want to come and support the other operators, you know, we'd be more than happy to have you there as well. And then the Sunday, June 23rd, Metrobus is going to host its second annual baseball tournament.
Softball.
Softball, thank you, softball tournament, at Bob Cross Park in Sauk Rapids, and that first pitch will be at 1:15, field will open an hour prior for practice, so if you're interested, or if you're able to attend, be more than happy to come take part and watch the, well, not take part, watch, right?
Take part.
You can take part. We're getting your jersey with your name on it, number, if you want a shirt, a shirt. Right, so, that's all I have, and then, right now, we're actually going to turn over to Sunny Hess. Sunny Hess and her HR department and her team in marketing and, and training the safety, they worked on initiative, a recognition wall, which is located here in our boardroom, so I invited Sunny to talk to you, to spend some time to talk to you about a recognition wall, and followed by Nate Rammacher will go into the marketing piece of it. I think you guys will be all amazed to see the hard work that the marketing, training, and HR department put.
Can you send the email out on the rodeo stuff, though? The 21st and 23rd?
Yeah, rodeo and softball, yes, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, please, alright.
Yeah, so, with that, I'll just sit out there.
You going to actually compete this year?
Ah, no, I don't think my truth code policy covers that.
So, last fall, we had done, and the HR and Training and Safety Department had rolled out our first professional organizational development training, which was organization-wide for all employees, and from that, we looked at all of the input or feedback that we got, and one thing that we heard on more than one occasion was to increase the way that we recognize, or have more visible recognition of our staff. So we had kind of bounced some ideas around, and we came up with the idea of a recognition wall, where we've got three different types of recognition cards, there's peer-to-peer recognition, supervisor or manager-to-employee recognition, and then customer recognition. And we've got a recognition box out in the break area, employees have access to the peer-to-peer cards, can write them out at any time, they go into the, the recognition box, and then on a weekly basis, myself and the two operations managers review them, just to make sure there's nothing inappropriate, and then log them and post them on the wall for everybody to see. To date, so we started this, we kicked it off, I think the first communication was posted on March 28th. Since then, we've had 45 peer-to-peer recognition cards submitted, and 12 supervisor or manager-to-employee recognition cards, and then we've, we've put all of our customer compliments since January 1st on two cards, and posted those. So we've got 75 total recognition cards posted right now. I take that back, we just reviewed a couple this afternoon, so they're not out yet, but they're counted in that 75. So, I mean, it's been a really fun project, we got a little creative, I'll let Nate talk about the-
Well, actually, after the meeting, invite you guys out there to take a look at it, it's in our employee break area, and if you'd like, I'll talk you through kind of what we did at that point.
Okay.
We got pictures of all the city halls up to represent the service areas, and service, the cities that we serve, the transit center of downtown, we docked those up to make them look the best they ever had, you won't believe what they just said in halls, but.
Ours always looks good, there's a couple of local cities that-
The wall-
Yours looks good, but it's hard to photograph.
The wall itself is a road, where the cards are placed on the road, and then the decals are, of the buildings are around it, we've got some bus magnets.